This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the November 17th meeting of the South Whitehall Board of Commissioners. I ask if we could start off this evening by a roll call on who's here. Randy, please.
Commissioner Walk, here. Commissioner Long.
Here.
Commissioner Seton.
Here.
Commissioner Kelly.
Here.
And Commissioner Morgan.
Here. The gang's all here. I'd ask next if we could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the republic, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. I'd like to note that all public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted on Board Docs for the public's access. I'd also like to note that the Board did meet in executive session this evening to discuss legal personnel and land acquisition matters. Before we get started into our agenda this evening, I would ask you, Randy, if you could just read over the virtual rules for this evening?
Sure. If you are participating virtually through go-to-meeting tonight, and you have a question on an agenda item under courtesy of the floor, simply type your name, address, and question into the chat feature, and the moderator will read your question aloud for the Board to hear.
Thank you, Randy. Recorder's on. We're good? Right, very good. So, this evening, we'll start in with our presentations. And first presentation on the agenda this evening would be the first reading of the proposed 2022 budget. Scott, welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can everybody hear me? The first reading of the budget is tonight. This is a culmination of events over the last few months of some workshop meetings, as well as many discussions for this year's current budget. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to read the budget for the proposed 2022 budget. In the general fund, there is no proposed tax increase. In the general fund, we expect to bring in $6,965,444 from our real estate tax, $700,000 from our real estate transfer tax, $600,000 from our local services tax, $3.5 million from our earned income tax, $2.35 million in our business privilege tax, $1.3 million from our admissions tax, $325,000 from our cable franchise fees, $551,480 in licenses, permits, and fees. That includes police fines, that sort of thing, $4,500 in interest, and $254,684 in grants and gifts in the general fund, offset by $169,408 in discounts and miscellaneous income. Those discounts are primarily for the real estate tax. Total revenue in the general fund is budgeted at $16,381,700. In our expense for the general fund, we have scheduled a proposed $6,938,374 for police, $5,858,312 for Public Works, $3,356,458, and for Parks and Recreation, $401,360. In total, expense is $16,554,504. The sum of the revenue and the expense leaves an operating deficit of $172,803, which is offset by the estimated cash of $6,87,600 in the general fund. Additionally, in the general fund, there are transfers out of $2,784,334, which includes transfers to the Capital Fund, the Refuge Fund, as well as the Debt Service Fund for our debt payment. At the end of next year, the budgeted unappropriated reserve in the general fund is proposed or estimated at $3,130,463. In our capital fund, we have proposed $46,970 in income revenue, which is customary for the capital fund. The capital fund only usually gets revenue from various grants, and that's the majority of that revenue as well. In the expense of the capital fund, we have $112,000 for administration. We have $217,113 for the police. For Public Works, we have $1,174,700. For Parks and Recreation, we have scheduled $202,000. And for the Wears Dam project, we have proposed $850,000. All in all, the total expense in that category is $2,555,813. The revenue minus the expense leaves a deficit in the capital fund of operating revenue and expense of $2,508,843, which is in part funded by the cash carryover of $147,679, $600,000 in bond proceeds, and a transfer in from the general fund of $1,780,813. Our estimated unappropriated reserve at the end of next year is expected to be $19,649 in the capital fund. For the American Rescue Plan Act Fund, we have scheduled $729,750 in revenue. In expenses, we have three categories. The first is Public Works for $300,000. The second is a capital investment in water and sewer systems, also to the degree of $300,000, and our volunteer fire companies to the amount of $129,750. Our total expenses in the American Rescue Plan Act Fund are $729,750. There is no difference between the revenue and the expense in terms of a dollar amount. So we expect to have on hand cash of $1,44,337 as of January 1st, 2022, of which that $729 will be subtracted, which will leave us with a budgeted unappropriated reserve of $314,587. In our open space fund, we have no expected revenues. However, we do have $100,000 of expected expense. This will be offset by the cash carryforward amount in the open space fund of $416,323, which will leave us with a budgeted unappropriated reserve of $316,323 at the end of 2022. In our state highway aid fund, we are expecting $665,000 in grant funding, which is the entire revenue amount for that fund. We expect to have $350,000 of administration expenses and $449,000 of public works expenses, which total $799,142. Our revenue minus our expense in the state highway aid fund leaves us with an expected deficit of $134,142, which is offset by the $303,422 in the estimated cash carryfor balance, leaving us at the end of next year with a budgeted unappropriated reserve of $169,280. In our refuse fund, we expect to receive $111,000 of grant revenue. We expect to receive $2,787,300 of build fees, as well as $30,700 of miscellaneous income, totaling $2.929 million of revenue. In our expenses, we expect to have $2,968,564 in total expenses, which leaves us with a deficit in the refuse fund of $39,564, which is offset by the estimated cash carryforward number of $607,029. Also, in the refuse fund, there is a $300,000 transfer in from the general fund, which will leave us with a budgeted unappropriated reserve amount of $867,466 at the end of 2022. There is no rate increase in the refuse fund. There is, however, a proposed rate increase of 7.1% in the water fund to reflect the expenses and the rate increase that Lehigh County Authority has given us, also to the tune of 7.1%. We expect to receive $4,221,400 in the water fund in build fees, as well as $34,500 of miscellaneous, excuse me, miscellaneous revenue totaling $4,255,900. We expect to spend $3,201,759 on administration expenses, and we expect to have $1,134,600 as an investment in our capital systems. Total expenses in the water fund equal $4,336,359, leaving us with a deficit of revenue minus expense of $80,459, which is offset by our cash carryforward of $2,615,222 as well. We also have a transfer out from the water fund of $400,500, which is the water fund portion of our bond debt, leaving us with a budgeted unappropriated reserve at the end of the year of $2,134,263. In our sewer fund, there is also no rate increase here. We expect to receive $10,500 in permit fees, as well as $500 in work on property revenue, and $2,942,000 in build fees, as well as $311,000 in collection charges and miscellaneous revenue, totaling $3,264,500 in the sewer fund in revenue. In expenses, we have administration expenses at $2,781,454, as well as an investment in our capital sewer system of $980,500, giving us a total expense of $3,761,954. Our revenue minus expenses in the sewer fund equates to a deficit of $497,454, offset by a cash carryforward amount of $5,5,727 in the sewer fund as well. Our transfers in from the sewer fund include $250,000 from the water fund, leaving us with an expected budgeted unappropriated reserve at the end of next year of $4,758,273. Our debt service fund, we have expenses in this fund of $359,021. This includes the general fund principal on our bond, as well as interest expense. We expect to have a cash outlay for debt of $495,000, which is the exact principal payment, as well as transfers in in that fund of $854,021, which are from the water fund and the general fund for the total bond expenses for that year. For the fire fund, we have no increase in the fire tax and expect to receive $1,134,518 in revenue. In expense, we expect to have $1,47,781, which leaves us a revenue less expense of a positive $86,737, which is added to the estimated cash carryforward of $471,831, which will give us a budgeted unappropriated reserve at the end of next year of $558,568. That is the first reading of the budget.
Thank you, Scott, very much. All right. Are there any questions or comments from the Board?
I do have some comments or questions. Just a few at a high level. So, if my memory is correct, at our last budget workshop, I believe we said, I know I said, that for the general fund, our revenue should exceed our expenses, and we gave general direction to reduce costs across the board by 5% in order to achieve that. This summary and your reading still has expenses exceeding revenue by $172,000. So could you comment on what occurred there? I guess, I guess first, could you comment on, you believe we gave the direction that the revenue should exceed the expenses, and then after you went through the work to accomplish the 5% cost reduction, why is it that we still have a deficit?
Yeah, that's, that's an understandable question. So, we were able to take a look at general fund expenses, and through the work of the various department heads, we were able to bring certain expenses lower. As an example, we have scheduled to bring on three police officers full-time in 2022. However, the impact of that on our budget won't start until June or July. So what we did there was, for the budgeted expense number for the salaries, we were able to cut that in half. So that was one measure that we took. Another measure that we took, although you won't see it in the operating, the difference in the operating expenses and the revenue, and this is where the majority of the changes occurred, Herb looked at the capital project for paving, and we were able to take a look at any sort of savings that can be done through evaluating our paving options, where we may perform certain work, we can do certain work ourselves in-house, as opposed to outsourcing the work, which resulted in about a $492,000 reduction of that transfer out to the capital fund. So although, although you do see a difference of revenue and expense to a negative degree of $172,000, the total expense number throughout the entire budget, we did bring down considerably. Additionally, we removed one vehicle from the police request, which was four vehicles, which saved about $53,000. And we reduced some staffing, which saved about a staffing request for the next year in the community development department, which saved about $97,000 overall, as well as evaluated our software licenses in our IT department, which saved about $13,000. We also moved a few expenses from the capital budget to our open space funds, which you see in that open space category, which include the South Whitehall Chase Park upgrade, as well as the Millhouse roof and the Coverbridge Park staining as well. So all in all, the total budget effect, we were able to reduce the operating expense by about $268,000. But the capital expense, we were able to bring down $642,000 additionally. So it was almost, it was, it was $910,000 that we were able to look at and, and cut, reduce total expenses by.
All right. Thank you, Scott. I'm not looking for a long discussion, but I'd like to ask the other Board members, how do you feel about the fact that we still have a deficit in the general fund? Are you agreeable to that, or would you like to see that brought down to zero?
I believe staff has done everything they could at this point to bring it to the lowest level possible. So I think we worked within the parameters we have in front of us this evening.
Okay. Any other comments?
I'll agree with Commissioners Morgan.
Okay.
I have a comment. I'm sorry.
Good.
So, Scott, to reiterate, the total reduced from the last budget workshop, when the Board made the request to go back and ask for a 5% reduction, stated $910,000 overall was reduced from this budget.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Of course, our goal was to have revenue and expenses be equal, or certainly revenue to be above. I think that you've certainly, all the departments have done, done a great job of going back and sharpening pencils and looking for savings where we could to bring this much closer than it was when it was presented to us last week. So although I'm, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Walk, I would prefer to see revenue equal to or exceed expenses. I'm, I'm pretty comfortable where you are, that $172,000 difference is pretty close compared to where we were. So I'm on the fence about whether I would be hard and fast on that, so.
All right. Well, certainly, thank you for the summary, and thank you for everybody involved in obtaining those cost reductions that you, you've reviewed with us. I guess I have one other financial-type question. So, the general fund budgeted unappropriated reserve is $3.1 million, and that's around 20% of the expenses, probably a little less than 20%. Is that, is that number the fiscal stability fund or not?
That number includes the fiscal stability fund, although it's not the fiscal stability fund. It's, that number is not entirely the fiscal stability fund.
Okay, that's better.
Yeah.
Because, because if this number is 18% of the expenses, and there's other money included in the fiscal stability fund, because, because we've always said we want the fiscal stability fund to be 20% minimum.
I think we're backwards. So it's
Okay, go ahead.
This, this $3.1 million includes the current 2.4 almost in the fiscal stability fund.
Okay. Now, now the fiscal stability fund at 2.4 is a lot lower than 20%, though.
Correct.
And last, that's about where we were last year, then?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions from the Board?
I just have a follow-up. In tandem to you, I was going to ask this, but it's a follow-up to yours. So, Scott, during the budget workshops, we did discuss the fiscal stability fund, because there was a million dollars moved out of it at the end of 2019, kind of as seed money or to start the campus renovation, and the intent then was to move it back from fiscal back to general fund. I know we had discussion about it, and if you could just, for clarity for the full Board to understand, that is still the goal to move those funds back, but at this point, that's not being done tonight in this particular budget.
That is correct. So, the fiscal stability fund, so what, what this picture of the budget that you see with the general fund monies are what we expect to have at the end of next year? So, we, we don't have current room if we want our fiscal stability fund to equal 20%, which would be about $3.4 million. If we were to move a million dollars today, although we do have $6 million that we're estimating in cash as of the end of the year, if we were to move a million today, the amount of money that would be in our operating cash accounts at the, in next December, a year from now, would be about $100,000 or less. So we currently don't have the, the room to be able to do that right now. Now, it may, it may be worth reconsidering in January and February pending just what happens in the, in the general course of the rest of this year, or even better yet, after the second quarter, which would give us a better idea of how much cash we have on hand and how well we're doing per revenue versus our budget.
So, the estimated cash is based on this final quarter of the year's expenses. Is there a possibility that all of the expenses that you were expecting may not necessarily equal that amount of money, and by the end of the year, we could be in a different financial place?
That is correct. So, the, the budget that's presented in front of you is, is trying, one of the goals of it is to be conservative on the revenue portion, so to estimate revenues, not to the highest degree that we could possibly have, so that we hope that revenues beat our numbers here in the budget, and also expenses to be in the highest possible place they could be, in the hopes that expenses are lower. In the past four years, we have done a considerable job at bringing in more revenue than the budget has, has put forward, as well as spending less money than the budget has allowed for.
And I do have a follow-up, a question. Under bond proceeds, under capital fund, $600,000, that is what was earmarked for Wears Dam.
That is correct.
This, the Commissioners have, over the last several years, earmarked $50,000 a year toward, helping to fund that program as well. And I don't see that we've got a line item for that $200,000 that was restricted for Wears Dam. Should that not be listed under one of these columns, so that we've got an accurate picture of what we've got put aside for that particular project?
Yeah, so it'll show in your budget packet. And for anybody in the audience, if you want one of these budget packets, feel free to just let me know after the meeting, or email me at the township, or give me a call. My extension is 222, and I can get you a budget packet if you want. In the general fund summary page, the one I printed out, it should show a, a transfer on there from the fiscal stability fund to the capital fund of $200,000 for the Wears Dam portion. In the capital worksheet itself, it shows the staff-proposed expense of $800,000, of which the Board decided to add $50,000 to that in total, which would be $850,000. So I believe it is appropriately reflected, but it's not going to show on, on this page.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sorry, I have one more. So I'm sorry. Under state highway aid, it just caught my eye that the $350,000 is listed under administration. I was under the impression those funds could only be used for road-related. So is that actual administration, meaning staff, or is that?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, so that $350,000 is the expense that we pay for streetlights in the township, and it's just where the DCD decides to put that expense falls under the administration category.
That makes sense. Okay, thank you for clarifying that for me. Thank you very much.
Scott, I'd just like to highlight one thing for mainly the public, who may not have attended the workshops. So, in the, in the sewer fund, the township has been increasing the cash available for the eventuality of Klein's Island contributions, which is the main sewer treatment facility where the Lehigh Valley. So, sewer fund has this $5 million cash, and this year, we actually earmarked $2 million as restricted funds for Klein's Island. All right, we just took a small step to like earmark it as restricted funds.
Correct. Yeah. That, that, though, is, is reflected within the sewer fund, although it's not an individual line.
Right, right. I understand. So, procedural question. We have two more budget readings, the second reading and a final reading. I think we've done a great job in resolving everything at the last budget workshop, which you're presenting here. If there should be any comments, you know, recommended changes, either based on this discussion or upon further review, because you did a lot of work here to get this pulled together in time for this meeting. We, procedurally, we still have the opportunity to do that. I'm not suggesting there's going to be a lot of changes, but if, if there might be one recommended change, we still have the latitude to do that.
From what I know about the budget, that is correct. It will require the budget, the reading of the budget to be longer than it was tonight, a little bit, but yes. Because I would have to highlight the changes.
What would you do? Do you simply highlight the change, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. If, if that's correct, Solicitor Zader.
Yes, it is, sir.
Just a quick comment on the follow-up with regards to reserves. Did you say that basically from this year to last year, we're pretty much in line percentage-wise, around 20%? Is that what we're anticipating?
That, that's historically been the goal of the township, to have 20% in the fiscal stability fund itself. However, we also, in conjunction with that, have an effort as the Finance Committee to put forward a, a new benchmark, which can live simultaneously with that benchmark of 20% in the fiscal stability fund, which is our fund balance policy. So they're very similar, but they're distinct as well.
And just to emphasize, you know, going forward in the future, I think it's very important to ensure that we're continuing to build on that, to keep as much rainy day as possible. Just a, a comment, you know, one of the struggles being in business and then coming as a Board of Commissioner is obviously, I do recognize that they're not all apples-to-apples comparison. You know, obviously, for me, I struggle with the fact that, you know, we're potentially approving a budget that's saying that we're going to lose money. So obviously, if I do that in my business, I'm going to be looking for something else to do. But I do recognize the fact that, you know, again, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. And I appreciate the staff, you know, digging deep to see what they can do while not at the same time sacrificing services for our residents. But so I think, but, and at the end of the day, I recognize government is about compromise too. So I think it is definitely, we had some hard conversations. And at the end of the day, it was the staff who put the work into to make it happen with our input. But so I guess that's just, I don't really have a question. That's just sort of my comment, kind of feeding off of what we, you know, an earlier conversation.
Anything else? Right, any questions from the public? Any in the chat? Again, staff did a phenomenal job in putting this budget together and, and coming together with some of the requests that the board had made. So thank you for all your hard work. It's much appreciated, and this township is well served by everything you do each and every day. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next this evening for consideration and discussion, we have a presentation of our community garden. This is in reference to the safety and operations plan that was discussed. We had approved our community garden with some contingencies. They would come back with a safety plan and operations plan. We have Frank here. I know Mike and Herb are also here to support that discussion. Frank, welcome. Is the mic on? You might need to, is the little green button on?
There we go, sorry about that.
Now you're loud.
Good evening once again. So recall that I was here on behalf of the Green Advisory Committee at the October 20th Board of Commissioners meeting. At that time, we received a conditional approval for our community garden pilot project to be located here on the campus. The condition was that we develop an operation safety plan. So in the past few weeks, I've, on behalf of the Green Advisory Council, have worked with staff to put together a plan that I believe was attributed to the commissioners earlier this week. And so with that, I would respectfully ask that the conditional approval be converted to a final approval so that we can move forward with the project.
First, Frank, thank you for putting that plan together in such a, in my opinion, a pretty short amount of time. I'm glad you got the opportunity to work with staff, Herb and Mike. And I think it was passed along to even Chief Dorney and Randy as well. Much appreciated. So yeah, I'll open it up for any questions or comments from the board.
I have some questions. I should have asked this at the last meeting, honestly. We didn't have like the layout. And I tried to click on that icon and it doesn't open up the layout. At the last meeting, I was on the impression that the garden was like outside the waste. What's the acronym, David?
Yard waste.
The yard waste center. And when I read the safety plan, I get the impression that it's actually inside the yard waste center. A plot plan would surely show us where it is.
It opened when I, when I sent it there.
Right there.
Yeah. So it's inside the fence line. I mean, and we want to do that deliberately because we want to have fencing to protect the garden from, from animal intrusion. There's a grassy hill there where the, the triangle shows. And so the idea is that we would put the, the raised beds on the grassy hill, so.
Is there a fence between the garden and the actual operating portion of the?
No, the fences is, the fence runs on the, the, the upper edge of that triangle. The fence is just beyond that.
Okay. That seems to be a very close proximity. You know, the whole issue we talked about last time, and I realize the safety plan addresses this, it best addresses it by saying, nobody's going to be in this garden when the yard waste center is in operation. Is, is that the idea that people who are in the garden are protected from any hazards at the yard waste? Because yard waste won't be operational at the same time?
Well, what we said is that we were restricted so that if there's any, any work going on to remove the dumpsters, that sort of thing, that we would not allow access during those times.
Okay, all right, thank you. And okay, there's no fence on, I guess that's the south side, right? There's no, there's no fence between the garden and the yard waste?
No, there isn't.
Just up on the hill. Okay, thank you for that. I have two questions. Just another aspect of safety that I, I, by the way, I think the safety plan is, is very good. I see a lot of thought went into it by, you know, the individuals. It's very well thought out. So one important aspect of safety is the accountability to ensure the safety, to ensure the safety that's written in the plan. So I have two questions about accountability. Going forward, who is accountable for the safety plan? And who, I think it's probably somebody within the township. Who is the single person in the township who has the single accountability for ensuring that the safety plan is actually met? And we don't have any safety incidents?
So I mean, I would say that the, the person we're looking to coordinate most of this is Debbie with regard to the library, because that's where most of the programming is going to be run from. We have points of contact listed in the safety plan for, you know, various aspects of, of the operation. So I mean, I don't, I, we haven't identified a single person, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, all right, so I'll just, that, I asked it as a question. I'll just give a recommendation. I think we need to appoint a person who's like the, the the number one person who is employed by the township, who's accountable for the safety of that garden. I don't know who that is, but I think that's just an advisable and prudent thing to do. So.
I would need staff then to provide a recommendation.
I'm more than happy to take on that responsibility.
Okay, thank you. And then the next comment is very similar. It's just sort of dropping down to like practically what happens on a day to day basis. And again, I'm, I'm saying this because of the proximity still. I think it would be a good idea to have, I'm going to use the term safety officer, that at any point in time, there's a designated safety officer who's, who's watching out that whatever's going on in the garden, again, relative to the yard waste or whatever else, you know, all the traffic, that there be a safety officer. And I think that should be put in the plan, that at any point in time, there's someone designated to fill that role, to make sure that, you know, we do have the, the safety that's embedded in the plan and we don't have any unexpected safety events.
You're not suggesting that that need to be a single individual, though? I mean, it can be different people at different times.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think that's true. So, so if Debbie has this overall responsibility, I, I think on, on any given day, if people are going into the garden, we ought to say, okay, you're the safety officer and you're the person who's watching out for, for, you know, everything is being done safety, safely. Everything's being done in accordance with the plan. And that, that way, you actually have someone who, who knows they have that role. And we trust them, they're going to actually fulfill that role as opposed to, well, here's a plan written on a piece of paper that's on a bookshelf and hey, go on out to the garden. And nobody knows they have that responsibility. It's just an extra aspect of making sure all of this is done safety, safely.
Okay. Frank, if I may ask, this is meant for children primarily, correct?
Well, there will be adult volunteers who are doing.
Who would be with the, children would not be there by themselves. There's always going to be.
No, we outline in the plan that there has to be adult supervision whenever children.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
We, it outlines in the plan that there has to be adult supervision whenever children.
And that supervisor, that supervision by the adult is obviously going to care about the safety of the kids.
I would assume so, yes.
Debbie Jack runs oodles and oodles of programs throughout the library. I'm quite certain she's going to be very diligent on ensuring that everybody's aware of the safety protocol as well as in combination with Randy and staff here at the township. So I have no doubt that safety will be very much taken care of. Herb, you have.
Just from my past experience, you know, you have, you have a construction site and the first thing, the first topic is safety. And you go over all the safety issues and it's out in front of everybody. It's on everybody's mind. And that just breeds a real, a safety culture, safety consciousness. And that, that's why I'm making these comments.
Yeah, and, and you know, the, the expectation would be there'd be a safety minute or something like that before a program starts, you know, specifically to address that, make sure everybody is aware that, you know, safety is primary consideration and everybody needs to comply with the rules.
Okay.
Frank, I just, just a comment, you know, without, you know, getting into the weeds. Thank you for bringing this. I think you're going to learn as you go. I'm a big picture person. I don't think we need to talk anymore about specifics here. And I don't think OSHA needs to get involved in the community garden. So thanks for, thanks for what you're doing and I hope to see this through. Thanks.
Great, thank you.
All right, are there any other thoughts or comments from the board?
I just had one question. The children, based on the safety report, looks like they're going to only be allowed after the yard waste is closed, so after 3:00 PM. But during the normal operating hours of the garden, I mean, the yard waste area, volunteers could be coming and going while there's.
We saw it was okay to allow volunteers, adult volunteers to come in during that time. But not during the time when the dumpsters are being moved. But we would, according to plan, we would allow adult volunteers to be present when cars are coming in and out of the yard waste center.
Thank you. I guess I just had a question at the presentation you gave us last time. I asked if any consideration was given to use the mill house that we own, which is a building that we own on the corner over by Wears Dam. It's an underutilized building. It's just sitting there and it's got a, a nice plot of land behind it. There's a parking lot across the street. I think that would, as we're listening to different comments being made about safety and locking the gate and opening the gate and who's going to be in charge of safety and people are going to have to wear vests. And we've got, as a township, we own a piece of property that's located in an area that would be extremely safe and potentially could actually engage people who are visiting Cover Bridge Park or Wears Dam or walking at Greenway. And so I guess I would ask, has any consideration been made to, to put it there? There's plenty of room, I believe there's water at that building.
Frank, I can.
I'd like to comment on that. I think, I think we talked about this at length, that the whole reason in having it at the library, near the library, was because the library was the sponsor of this. The library received the grant. We're working with them and the Rotary. Their educational programs would work directly out of the library. So they would be coming right from the library to do these programs. In the future, which is part of the discussion, should this program grow, which we would hope it would, the mill house would be an excellent opportunity to expand into a different type of community garden. But this particular community garden concept was directly related to the library, thus its location. So I think this one is pivotal to have right there.
I mean, we had considered several other locations before settling on this one. And the, a collaboration with the library and the educational programming they want to run, why we think this is the best choice.
We, we also talked too, at the Green Advisory Committee, this is an excellent opportunity to collaborate with the library and the GAC committee on the green initiatives that are being done right here on the campus. What we're trying to show is all the green projects that can be done in a community right here on the, on the campus and maybe creating an interactive map that will show all those opportunities as well. And the community garden would be one of those. I'm sorry, Randy, you were going to.
I just wanted to touch on the mill house real quick. Big reason that wasn't selected is the, I, I know it looks like there's this big plot of land there, but what you don't see under the turf is there's actually a drain field for the septic system of the, the mill house there. So it's not something we could put a community garden on top of.
My understanding was these are going to be raised beds, so nothing will be below the ground anyway.
Even still, you shouldn't be putting anything on top of the, the septic field.
So it's all septic back there. There's no.
The majority of it, yes.
Area that's open for any.
That would get enough sunlight for it. It would be in between the, you know, the house and the neighbor's garage. I don't think it would be successful in terms of the growing.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from?
I personally think community gardening is great. It's good and expanding it is even better. The location at the library is definitely kids and for them to get educated and expand. There's other places.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we're calling this a pilot program, right? So we want to, we want to get this off the ground, show it can be successful, show it can be maintained.
Like to see a lot of tomatoes.
And then we'd love to come back in front of the board and propose a bigger, bigger project, you know, a year or so from now. Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Are there any questions from the public? Any in the chat, Dave? I, I would like to make a motion to move forward to final approval with the operations and safety plan in place. Any minor modifications that need to be made with that in regards to naming somebody as a safety leader? Absolutely, but giving you the approval to move forward with the garden as discussed. So we do have a, a motion on the floor for final approval of the community garden as presented. Second from Commissioner Sutton. Can I have a roll call vote, please, Randy?
Commissioner Walk?
On the condition that you actually write the word safety officer and what the purpose of that role is in the plan, I agree.
Made the note. Okay.
I vote yea.
Commissioner Long? Yes. Commissioner Sutton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
No, I would love to see this project proceed outside of the yard waste. I don't believe having volunteers coming in and out in a space that is shared with cars and tractors and whatnot, emptying their yard waste. I would much prefer to see another area, so I, I wish that could have found another location, but good luck with your program.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes. Good luck. It's going to be wonderful. Thank you very much for all your hard work.
All for your time.
All right. All right, next this evening for consideration and possible action, we have some resolutions. The first is a resolution, amending resolution 2021-39, granting preliminary final approval to a major plan entitled Skilled Nursing Addition for Cedar Brook Senior Care and Rehab and granting an additional waiver pursuant to the SALDO sections 312-13F3 and 312-43. Dave, welcome.
Yes, thank you. This is a resolution related to the Cedar Brook Nursing Home Facility. They're seeking a waiver from SALDO, requiring a recorded plan prior, prior to the issuance of permits. I think the applicant could go over existing or what remains for approvals, particularly outside of agency approvals. So PennDOT, Conservation District and DEP. There's any outside approvals that need to be done, what the status of those are prior to issuing permits and then beginning work. Also with regards to security and insurance, making sure all this stuff's in place. That usually is part of the final plan. So just making sure that all our bases are covered. So if we're, if the board's satisfied with that, we have no, no opposition to the approval. Thank you.
Good evening. May it please the board. I'm David Backenstow and I'm an assistant solicitor with the County of Lehigh. Very pleased to be here tonight. With me is Rick Mulchainey, who is the Director of General Services. I know you know Rick. He's been here several times. About two months ago, September 15th, the commission graciously granted a preliminary final conditional approval for the Cedar Brook Senior Living Facility. And since that time, the staff has been working diligently to meet all the conditions so that we can get a final approval. I know our, our lead engineer, Adam Whalen, has been in constant contact with your engineer. And I know our, our director, Gary Warren, who's the head of the project, has been working feverishly to try to meet all the conditions. Of course, it's only been two months, but I think they've almost complied with really every condition that the, the engineer had, which was a big part of your conditional approval. So as we work through those processes, as you can imagine, Rick Mulchainey, who's heading up this project, is incredibly excited about it. And he'd really like to get some shovels in the dirt as soon as possible. And what I mean by that is do earthmoving activity, not talking about going vertical, because we can't do that until we have the full approved recorded plan. We're going to need full land development plan, maintenance plan, any other kind of easements, blanket easements. I've been working with your solicitor's office on preparing that information and getting that. I think the final cost estimates are going to be in place shortly. Township's going to be ready then to place a full bond and have all the insurance certificates in place. But what we, what we'd very much like to do in order to maximize our monies and our funds and try to get this project along, because we do think it's really going to be extraordinary for the, for the residents of the community, is start to move earth. And what I mean by that is soil and erosion and maybe do some basin construction and stabilization, start to put some utilities in, do excavation and maybe prepare the earth so we can put the parking lot in, so that when we have all our final approvals and the plan is recorded, we really can jump in and, and get ready to go. The nice thing is the township is not at risk in any respect. Because, again, I'm working with your solicitor, who's obviously very experienced and very good and has prepared what's known as a pre-security construction agreement. And what that agreement does, which of course we're absolutely thrilled to enter into, it requires first of all that we have millions of dollars of insurance and name the township as an insured on that. It requires place a $10,000 escrow with the township so that you can review and inspect any work that we do. And it completely protects the township from any liability. The county would indemnify and defend the township from any liability whatsoever. So there are really no issues, I think, that should be of any real concern for the township. I think the staff has took a look at the project. And again, I've worked with your solicitor and his office extensively over the past couple of weeks. And in order to do this, we would need a waiver from two provisions of your subdivision land development ordinance. And as was read off by your, your president, Section 312-13 F3 and 312-43. And ostensibly, they provide that before any building permits can be issued, you have to have a recorded plan. And for the reasons that I've just laid out and for the reasons, I think, which have been adopted and endorsed by your staff and your township engineer, we would request a waiver so that we can start to do some of this soil work, earthmoving work. Thank you so much.
Are there any questions this evening from the board on this request?
The soil work that you're indicating is, did it have a price or an estimated amount of what it will cost to do that?
Boy, that, that's the one question I couldn't answer. I mean, we're talking about excavating earth and, you know, moving it and grading it so it's proper and putting the proper infiltration systems in place. I mean, it's going to be, you know, several thousand dollars for sure. You're going to have to have some backhoes and some bulldozers out there to move earth. And, and of course, the, the other thing, it's a very good question. All the work has to be done under the auspices of your engineer. Any work that's done has your engineer out there watching, inspecting. And that's why we put the $10,000 escrow up. So there's no cost to the township. All the costs on are us, not only for our own work, which of course they would be, but for the inspections that you would use to review the work that's been done. Yes, sir.
Any other questions from the board?
I have a question. Can you update us to the status of your PennDOT and Conservation District approvals at this point?
I'll defer a little bit to the township engineer. I know that the HOP has been applied for. I don't know if we got final. We do? Okay, there you go. We have our HOP permit in place and I guess we have our DEP Conservation District permits in place.
So what are, what are you waiting for then to record the, what, what's outstanding from the outside agencies to be able to record?
I think there are still some engineering reviews that have to be met, some drawings that have to be modified. I know the cost estimate is still being reviewed. And I know that the Solicitor's Office is preparing the final improvements agreement and maintenance agreement. They also would like a blanket maintenance. The township is requiring a, or requesting a blanket easement over the entire site for ingress and egress. And that's fine. County has no problem with that. However, we had to do an extensive title search because the township Solicitor's very, very good and very thorough, is requiring that I provide a certificate of title. So in order to do a certificate of title, I'm putting my license on the line saying, yeah, we have good title and nobody's going to, nobody's going to challenge that. And if they do, we'll fight it for you. So before I was able to do that, we had to get a title search. And as you can imagine, some of these properties were owned by the county since 1856, 1867. So I had our best crack title searcher in the Lehigh Valley working on this for several weeks, to be honest with you.
Thank you. Could I ask our engineer and solicitor to just comment on follow up on those issues?
Yes, we've had multiple submissions since, I guess, two months ago when they received approval. Either full sets or partial sets that we've been reviewing. There's a handful of items, less than 10, technical issues. Be cleaned up on the drawings. At that point, we would ask for a recorded set of plans. We would sign them, township, the board would sign them, they go to LVPC and then they go to the county courthouse. I know the recording process, I would say takes a month, if not a little bit more because of till everyone gets paper and signs it, it's a month, month and, you know, a month and a half at some points. The cost assessment was provided to the applicant recently. So I think they have it. They're getting the amount of money together or they're reviewing it. We haven't heard anything back regarding that. So out of the engineer's office, that's what we foresee, handful of technical items, things that can be solved, just are working through the details.
Thank you. Attorney Zader, from a legal standpoint?
I agree with what Mr. Backenstow has stated in terms of the process that he's been going through with my office. I would also say that the notion, the concept of a pre-security construction agreement is not a new concept. It's relatively routine in most municipalities. And it's been done here in South Whitehall in the past as well. And I think the key universally, when you look at these types of agreements between municipalities and a project developer, is that number one, there's no vertical construction. In other words, no building is being put in place. And the items that we're talking about that would be done here would be essentially earthmoving, erosion, segmentation control, emergency access, utilities going in the ground, stormwater infrastructure, those types of things that in, in most cases are really predicate to actually doing the vertical construction. And so I have no concern about it. It's a pretty routine matter from my perspective. I've, I've worked through this probably more than 100 times in the last decade in dozen plus municipalities, including South Whitehall. So I'm perfectly satisfied that we can make this work.
Thank you very much. Any other questions from the board? Are there any questions from the public? Any in the chat, Dave? All right. That being said, I will make a motion to move forward granting preliminary final approval to a major plan entitled Skilled Nursing Addition for Cedar Brook Senior Care and Rehab. Second. We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Morgan, a second from Commissioner Kelly. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Walk?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Sutton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the commission's time.
Absolutely. All right. Next this evening for consideration and possible action, we have a resolution extending a conditional offer of employment for entry level position of patrol officer in the township's police department to applicants number 67845 and applicant number 25439, conditioned upon the individuals satisfactorily completing the background investigation, polygraph examination, medical examination and psychological examination to confirm their fitness for duty. Chief Dorni, would you like to report out on this one?
Yes, Commissioner Morgan, thank you. In front of you this evening, she requests permission to grant conditional offer of employment to those, those two applicants, number 67845 and 25439. This is just a process element to start the background investigations. We've been here several times now already in the last two months. We're still actively trying to work through the list to get viable candidates prior to getting employed by somebody else, or if they don't make it through our process, which has been, we've had a little of both. So we have not successfully been able to hire anybody at this point. So we're still working our way down these civil service lists and these are the next two in line for that. So I'm requesting permission to move forward with that process.
Thank you, Chief Dorni. Are, are there any questions or comments for Chief Dorni on this request this evening? None from the board? Do I hear any from the public? None from the public? Any in the chat, Dave? All right. Do I hear a motion then to move forward to extend these conditional offers to the applicants as described?
I make a motion.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Walk and a second by Commissioner Kelly. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Here, Commissioner Walk?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Sutton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, chief. You got it. Next this evening for consideration and possible action, we have a resolution approving sewer planning module for Ridge Farms. Mr. Elias, welcome.
Hello.
Hello.
How's everybody doing this evening?
Doing fantastic. Thank you for asking.
Thank you for having me. So this is for Ridge Farms Phase One. I'm just going to remind everybody that sewer planning module is a request for approval of sewer allocation for a particular project. The document itself, which is pretty lengthy, is reviewed by Lehigh County Authority, LVPC, South Whitehall Township, and then ultimately final approval through DEP. What I'd ask is I'm going to read basically what's on the screen right there and then kind of explain it a little bit afterwards, because there's a little bit to go through. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. And also a representative from the Ridge Farms Project is here, if there's any other questions for him. So basically Ridge Farms is respectfully requesting the approval of a resolution for Phase One of their sewer planning module. This portion of the development includes 468 TND units, 14 residential units and 72,000 square feet of non-residential use. The total amount of flow requested for this phase is 119,906 gallons per day or 538 EDUs. The remaining amount of required allocation that will be requested in Phase Two of this project is 87,024 gallons per day or 390 EDUs. I put RDUs, which is wrong. It should.
Send everybody on their toes. That's.
Yeah. So basically, typically when I come before you guys to read these resolutions, it's for the whole allocation. The reason this one was split up, staff, we got together and this project is, it's a little bit different. It's a large scope. There's a portion of the project that currently we can't serve for water, okay, due to elevation. In that project though, Ridge Farms has agreed to provide a pump station to the township. Now, with that being said, we felt that until that is all finalized, why would we want to tie up 200-plus thousand gallons of allocation to that entire tract? We asked Ridge Farms if they would be willing to split that allocation over what we can serve currently, which is the 119,000 gallons and hold off for the remainder, the 87,000 gallons. Reason being, if something were to happen where this project wouldn't move forward past that first phase, that allocation stays with that piece of land. There are mechanisms to get that allocation back. It's lengthy and it's a process. The easiest way to do this, to ensure that the township isn't extending this allocation and then possibly having it tied up there till who knows when we're able to get it back if for some reason this project doesn't move forward after that first phase is completed. Ridge Farms, we all sat down, staff sat down and they agreed, let's split this up. We'll come back at a later date once those plans are all finalized and we'll request the remainder of the allocation. That's basically the long and short of it. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Makes absolute sense. Questions from the board?
Yeah, I got a, just a few. Thanks for that. That's very helpful, Mike.
Yeah, no problem.
Let's see. Where are we in the process? I actually did read this long document.
It's great.
And with all the different agencies, I'll say, you know, LCA and so on. But where are we in the process? As, as far as getting approval that the, this, the sewer flow from Ridge Farms can go to Klein's Island?
As far as this document is concerned?
Well, whether it's related to this document, I don't know if this document's involved in the approval process or not. I'll just say it as simply as I can. We, we must have to get approval so that 200,000 gallons per day can go into Klein's Island. And you're phasing it, but where are we in that approval process?
So we were asked, how long ago were we asked to come up with? A little over a year ago? They asked for our, LCA Allentown asked for our projections out to 2050, I think it was, or am I correct on 2050?
The first round was just five years.
It's five years, but then it was just going to be difficult, right? 25 years later, how do you know what's going to be built? The number that, that 200,000 gallons, that's already been removed from our allocation. So it's, it's, it's already set aside, was already built into those the requests that, that we filled towards LCA, towards the treatment plant. As far as I think if, if I'm answering your question correctly, the only thing we would lose, lose, tie up would be the remainder of the allocation. Those, that, that's already been approved by, if you read through here, LCA. So they do the collection and, I'm sorry, the conveyance and treatment. We do the collect, the collection. So all our numbers are already in there. That's, that part of it is, is done. It has to go to DEP and they look at it and they look to see if the collection and treatment system is enough to handle the flows coming off that site. That's their, that's their approval that's needed.
Okay. But as far as Klein's Island capacity, is that part approved?
It is, but that's, that's taken care, that's already, it's, yeah, it's LCA's end. If LCA had a problem with it, this document would reflect that they couldn't, that they couldn't accept the flows.
Okay. All right. So there's pages and pages and many pages have checkboxes of, of yes or no answers, right? So there's one checkbox that says, have all the applicable zoning approvals been obtained? And in June of this year, the answer was no. And I thought all the Ridge Farms zoning approvals were behind us.
You can. The Ridge Farm still needs to come in for final approvals. That's why that checkbox is still no.
And, and that's part of the land development process?
Correct. So Planning Commission has Phase 1A at it tomorrow. And then once that gets approved, that phase will come to the BOC for approval. So they're going, they're all breaking it up into Phase One and Two. And then they're also doing like an A and a B. So those things have not been approved, the finals. So that still needs to come through.
All right. Thank you. That's it.
Any other questions from the board?
I just have a question. Thank you for explaining the, the way that the phases were broken out.
broken out from the township's standpoint. And to follow up with what Dave just mentioned about final approval, I know Phase 1A is before planning tomorrow, which is the 30,000 square foot building. But this request is for all of Phase 1, which includes 468 units, TND units, and 14 residential units, and 72,000 square feet of non-residential use. I guess my question would be, wouldn't the sewer allocation match where we are in the planning process to, you know, do this 1A, and then when they go to 1B, we would have our next, so that it matches exactly what's on the table for development at the time?
So we broke it out to what we could serve. So if they have a 1A and a 1B, and we can serve all of 1, instead of going through three planning modules, we felt that 2 would suffice, instead of splitting it up three times. That's, that's why we did, that's why we did it in two slices of the pie.
It was a township decision for the good of the township?
In my opinion, yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Questions from the public? Any in the chat? All right. Do we hear a motion then to move forward with approving the sewer planning module for Ridge Farms, Phase 1?
I moved.
We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly. I'll second that. Second from Commissioner Morgan. Can I have a roll call vote, please, Randy?
Commissioner Walk?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Seton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Okay. So next on our agenda, I have some extremely exciting news for the township that we're very excited as a board to share and staff. We have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of South Whitehall Township, Behigh County, Pennsylvania, approving the township's acquisition of land consisting of approximately 26.87 acres located at 1036 Spring House Road for nominal consideration, authorizing the execution and delivery of an agreement of sale and purchase, and authorizing and directing all other necessary and appropriate action to accomplish the acquisition, including execution and delivery of requisite documents in connection with settlement and the payment of any sums that may be required therefor. So I do have some further information about this, but I will defer, Randy, and the fine gentleman in front of us.
Take it away, sir. If you don't mind introducing yourself.
Good evening. My name is John Kreisa. I'm here tonight on behalf of Mr. Davis, who could not be here tonight. And as you're saying, and as is in the resolution, this is for the approval of the agreement of sale, or to enter into the agreement of sale for 26.87 acres, which will be located at 1036 Spring House Road. And again, this will be for nominal consideration. So we ask for your approval. I'm here tonight.
And maybe what I could do is read a little information on it to help the public also further understand what this is all about this evening, because it's very exciting news. So, South Whitehall Township, as described, has received a significant land donation at a nominal price, totalizing 26.87 acres. This currently farmed piece of land is located near the Parkland School District Administrative Building on Spring House Road, just south of Route 22. The property's anonymous equitable owners are provided this, are providing this land to the township as a donation, with the caveat that the property continues to be farmed in the immediate future. This request aligns well with the township, as farming and agricultural preservation is a major area of focus. The agreement of sale permits a small portion of the property to be used to create a community dog park and/or a perimeter trail to promote public access. It also permits the ability to fix important stormwater issues on that site that lead to Spring House Road getting closed during heavy rain events. Once farming ceases, the entire parcel, or should farming cease, the entire parcel may be used for recreational purposes. However, the township will be working on a long-term lease agreement with local farmers to make sure the property is farmed as long as possible. This donation represents a major step forward by preserving additional open space within the heart of the township. The township can now take the next steps towards using this land for farming and agricultural preservation. We continue to look to balance development in the township by preserving our open space areas to make South Whitehall Township the best place to live, work, and play. This land is one of the last remaining farms in the township, south of Route 22. The land was under the heavy, was under heavy development pressure, and the existing zoning would have to be permitted, would have permitted an additional 60-plus single-family dwelling units. The future zoning of this property will be considered during the township's planning efforts through the update of the comprehensive plan. The acquisition of this land aligns with the township's strategic goals, plan, and goals of fiscal sustainability, community planning, and enhancing community livability. The township is beyond grateful for this donor's generosity and shared vision with regards to preserving the land. And I want to also make a special note, there was a lot of discussion on this, and work behind the scenes with our staff and the donor, and we are so forever grateful to all of the staff at the township who was involved in these discussions, including previous staff, which would be prior township manager Renee Bickel, along with Randy, and I'm sure the entire C.D. staff, Dave, and Herb, and Mike, and Scott. I'm probably missing a million people, but I know there were a lot of people involved in this. So, big thank you, and a huge, huge generous donation that the township will forever be grateful for. Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
No question.
I don't know how you could possibly have a question on this one. This is
No questions.
This is pretty much one of the most exciting things that's happened in a very long time, and we're forever grateful.
Yeah.
I have no questions. I have absolutely no questions. Just one big thank you.
I'll pass this all along to Mr. Davis.
Excellent. Thank you so very much. So with that being said, I would, I would like to make a motion to move forward with the acquisition of the land, as described, for the, I believe the nominal amount was
$1.
$1. So
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Morgan. We have a second from Commissioner Kelly. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Walk?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Seton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes. Again, our huge gratitude, and thank you for helping build the legacy of South Whitehall Township.
Thank you for your time tonight. Have a great night.
You too. Thank you so much. All right. Next this evening, why can't we have a full house when we have an announcement like that? My goodness. All right. So next this evening, we have one motion, or two motions for consideration. The first is a motion requesting permission to award a bid for the updates to the current comprehensive parks, recreation, and open space plan. This is all good stuff, Mike Cookett. It's all you.
We're, we're working in the right direction.
We sure are.
So, good evening, Commissioners. As you know, we've been going through the RP process to bring on a consultant to perform our prop plan, which will be completed next year. Steering Committee looked at all of the responses. There were five total responses. We narrowed it down to three, which we brought in for an interview. And from there, we are recommending that the board approve Barry Islett and Associates, the award to complete this plan next year in the amount of $49,985. You will see that we had $50,000 budgeted.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions from the board?
Yes. Who were the other two bidders, and what were their bids?
The other two bidders were Michael Baker at $50,000 exactly, and Rutu Associates at $46,575.
And why was Barry Islett selected?
Barry Islett was selected simply on the steering committee's view, the firm that will produce the best product for us. One thing they really had going for them was a certified park and rec professional on their team, which would really help, not only on the capital plan and some of the other things in the plan, but on the actual programming aspect of things.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Any other questions from the board?
I'm just curious, who comprised the steering committee? Who does the selecting of?
It was myself, Randy Cope, and Dave.
Thank you. It's a solid group right there.
I will tell you, it was, it was not an easy decision. We deliberated for quite a bit, and feel that this, you know, ultimately will be the company that'll put out the best product at the end of the day.
Thanks, Mike. Any other questions from the board? Any from the public? In the chat?
Jeff Ward asks, is the land donor anonymous?
The land donor has requested to remain anonymous. Jeff Ward, let him know, we'll send him a press release.
Just let him.
Did he hear me? Excellent. All right. Any other questions? Nothing in the chat for Mike. All right. That being said, do I hear a motion to move forward for permission to award the bid for the comprehensive parks, recreation, and open space plan to Barry Islett and Associates at the amount explained? We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly. Can I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Walk. Have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Walk?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Seton?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Mike. Don't go anywhere.
I'm moving.
You're on deck. All right. Next this evening, we have for consideration and possible action, a motion requesting permission to award bid for the flood mitigation planning study for Covered Bridge Park.
For this one, I said the last one was a difficult decision. This one may be even more of a difficult decision. So, the township received six total quote-unquote bids. Three of the bids were actually what are called non-bids, in that the firm stated that they weren't sure that the scope was going to be attainable. So they would rather not bid on this project. We did have three official bid responses of that. The lowest responsible bid was Gilmore and Associates at $32,400 to complete the base bid. We also did add the alternate bid at the request of the board to look at the scope of the entire Jordan Creek Greenway through Covered Bridge Park, which you'll see is about 10,000 feet, and that bid came in at $74,600 from Gilmore and Associate, again, the lowest responsible for the alternate bid as well. Due to the nature of the responses, that feels there should be a conversation about this project and how we
Yeah, I'm unsure of what you, what you need from, what you
Staff is actually divided on awarding this bid. And we were hoping for some discussion among Board of Commissioners as far as if we should award this bid. We had one bid come in, in, under budget or on budget, which would be Gilmore and Associates. So we have one choice to complete this project. I guess the question was, we did have three non-bid responses, which was a little strange. And then we had two other bids that were over budget. So we just wanted to make sure that the board was comfortable moving forward awarding this to Gilmore.
Okay.
I think that's, that would be, for me, it would be a difficult decision to make tonight, because I'd want to know a little bit more about the discussions that happened internally with staff. So my suggestion would be, I think we should table this this evening and have a workshop if we need to, just to discuss this particular subject. Because I wouldn't be comfortable giving you direction without knowing what your conversations were and concerns were, moving forward.
Yeah. I think that's a good idea. Could I, could I just add the types of things? I'm also glad, you know, we're not putting you on the spot to answer these types of questions tonight, but it'd be interesting to know, like, why did these three no bidders say the project's scope was unattainable? That goes to project feasibility. And so here we have somebody who's willing to do the job, and he's given us a price, and must be comfortable with his price for that scope of work. But nevertheless, if somebody else says it's unattainable, it'd be proper to know more about that. As part of like the risk management, what's the risk of this project, even if we have somebody who's competent, who's willing to move ahead. And, and I guess the other thing, I don't know if you were asking for a conversation about just this first phase, or this, the second phase, which, you know, is significantly more work. When, when you share more information, could you please share, like, why this is phased the way it is, and, you know, what's the whole background around it, for doing one, one smaller piece first, and then this possible larger piece?
Yeah. Well, and again, so we have a grant from DCD to look at the base bid portion of this. It was the request of the board that we also add an alternate bid, larger scope of the creek, because the base bid is a small section, and obviously, the flooding occurs on a much larger section.
Okay.
A question, follow-up. I mean, we don't have to go into detail now, but I guess, was there, was it mainly geared around the fact that, you know, financially, they didn't either need the work, didn't feel like this was something that could actually make work for them? Or was it having something to do with it, that there's nothing that could be done to mitigate flooding?
Or the latter. I think it's more that looking at this small section of creek, this approximately 2,000 or feet or under, you know, that any sort of mitigation efforts may not
Yeah, Mike's correct with that, too. The, I think the issue some of the non-bidders were running into was, this portion of the creek has a significant drainage area to the north. So there were some concerns that studying this small area really wouldn't attain kind of any flood mitigation we were looking to possibly accomplish there in Covered Bridge Park. So I think some of the suggestion was, you know, this, the whole corridor really needs to be studied to see exactly how, you know, flood mitigation could occur in Covered Bridge Park.
So, so in other words, we may need to reconsider the whole scope of the, of the project?
Correct, yeah. Like, there's multiple different angles with this one. Staff is not on, 100% on the same page that we should move forward and get the mapping and the information done, or that, you know, we may proceed with it as is, and maybe look at the larger scale, or look at, you know, if there is anything we can do that will really create
Well, for that, we very much appreciate that, that approach, that knowing that you're not comfortable 100%, you know, any one way. And it makes perfect sense to bring it back and have further discussion, you know, with the board, if that's, if you want the board to be involved in those conversations in a workshop area, so we can better plan for the future. Because this is a very important project. So
I only request there, and I do know that it's budget season, and I know we've been putting in a lot of late nights and a lot of hours, but the grant deadline for this is the middle of next year. So we would like to have that workshop meeting sooner rather than later, because it's a short timeline to get this project.
We can accomplish that maybe in the next, you know, couple, week or two? Yeah.
Great.
Very good.
And please invite one or more of these contractors, you know, they're not, you know, separated from the bid situation, so they could explain to us firsthand about the project feasibility.
I'm going to suggest a workshop on the second Wednesday in December, since it's already advertised as a workshop meeting.
December 8th.
Is that what it would be? December 8th, I think it is. Yep. So that'll be at 6:00 PM.
Maybe give the, the board the opportunity just to make sure they're, of their availability.
Yeah, I can circulate an email tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we'll table that one, then. All right.
Make a motion to table?
We can make a motion. We can make a motion to table. Commissioner Kelly, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Walk. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Walk?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Seton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, next this evening, under correspondence and information items, we have, on Thursday, November 18th, that's tomorrow, I think we already referenced this, we have a Planning Commission meeting at 7:30. On Monday, November 22nd, we have at 10:00 AM our Landscape Shade and Tree Commission. On Monday, November 22nd, we also have our zoning hearing board at 7:00 PM. Some upcoming events or information on Thursday and Friday, November 25th and 26th, that's the Thanksgiving holiday, the offices here will be closed. And want to remind everybody And want to remind everybody of some current vacancies on boards and commissions. We have our civil service commission. We have one alternate position vacancy. Landscape Shade Tree Commission, two vacancies. Park and Rec, one vacancy. And our zoning hearing board, one vacancy and alternate position. I know Tracy had provided some information. I think you had given me a list of applicants that we have so far. We've been kind of tied up with budget and hadn't had the opportunity to start our interview process again, but maybe we could recirculate those names and information to the board to see where we stand. And then also reminding everybody, if you know somebody might be interested in a board or commission, they can certainly put in their application online or call Tracy directly. She'll guide them through the process.
Commissioner Morgan, I do think we just received another application for the Parks and Recreation Board. So when we circulate that, we'll make sure the new names are added, too.
Excellent, thank you. I also like to note that the Green Advisory Committee did meet this week on, oh God, I don't remember what day it is anymore. Yesterday? Tuesday? Monday? Monday. Monday. I'll defer to Mike on the details of that meeting, but basically, we went over the current initiatives and discussions, talked a little bit about some future initiatives on GAC facts and including the high school. And I don't know, Mike, there was a cleanup program we're talking about doing in conjunction with Whitehall that's continuing. Was there anything of noted importance that I'm missing? Marie, I know you're in the audience tonight. Is there anything that you can recall that you'd like for me to mention to the group on our discussions during the GAC meeting? All right. Excellent. All right, great. So is there anything else that anybody'd like to add under boards and commissions and informational items? All right. Any questions from the public? Me in chat? All right. We have nothing under direction and discussion items this evening. However, we do have some old business. We have the Where's Damm status. Randy?
Sure, I do have a little update. Still haven't heard back from our grant application through DCNR, so we're patiently waiting for that. We should be seeing that any day, any week now, so that should be coming here shortly. But I did reach out to Michael Baker, the engineer working on the project this morning, and they did inform me that our ENS permit has been resubmitted to Lehigh County Conservation District, which addressed their technical review comments. Their typical review time is about 60 days. So once that final permit is received, we can then start preparing our bid documents for that project.
Excellent, thank you, Randy. Any questions for Randy on Where's Damm? Any from the public? Me in the chat? All right. So next, we're going to go through our department reports. Randy, would you like to follow it up or do you want to go first?
No, I can go next. I just want to, I don't want to steal any of the department heads' thunder here tonight. They'll report out on the date today, but I did think this was an opportune time to thank staff and the entire Board of Commissioners for your diligence during this budget workshop sessions. We have multiple sessions, some lasting as long as four or five hours. So I think everybody should be very, very proud of the work that went into this upcoming year's budget. Very proud of our team, very, very proud in terms of what we were able to accomplish with some outside of the box thinking and making some, you know, tough decisions with the Board of Commissioners here to move the budget forward. I also wanted to take a very brief moment to address some of the suggestions about our yard waste site. We've heard them loud and clear. Unfortunately, we're right in the middle of leaf collection season right now, so opening another day during the week just isn't in the cards. However, that's something, as soon as that process is finished, Herb and I are going to discuss, seeing if we can allocate an additional day during the week for the yard waste site. Hopefully, in the next month or two, we're able to do that. But we did provide some direction to our attendant at the site to make sure we open up some of the gates for the bigger dumpsters, so the residents don't have to lift their yard waste into the dumpster. That way, they can just walk it in and safely put it in there and hopefully not hurt themselves. And we're also getting a few additional cardboard dumpsters at the yard waste site. This time of the year, we see an increase in cardboard holidays. Everybody's getting the Amazon deliveries at their houses. So we've got a lot of extra cardboard coming into this site, and we want to make sure that it's in a nice, clean fashion and people have a place to dump it. So we are trying to work on some of these accommodations at that site, still working out some kinks. And again, Herb and I will discuss, you know, potential additional day here in the very near future.
Thanks, Randy.
I have a quick comment. I want to thank Randy for serving as the interim township manager for the past two and a half months. Time flies, doesn't it? You're doing a great job maintaining good progress with the township administration and the operation while being shorthanded, at least in some places. And especially want to thank you for being accessible to the board and providing open communication with the board. Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have community development. Dave?
So in the community development department, special projects we've been working on include the comprehensive plan. At the last planning commission meeting, we discussed when to have the comprehensive plan workshop meetings. Those have been scheduled for Tuesdays after the first Wednesday of the month. So the week in between commission meetings, basically. Those will be published on the calendar and through the blog and our email lists. Also, we're working on some sidewalk deferrals. There's the area around Tillman Square that George Kenny had started calling in those deferrals. He left and we got hit with the pandemic, so we're kind of revisiting that. In addition to that area, there was an area along Cracker Sport Road that the planning commission recommended we call in. We discussed that at one of the meetings where we approved a project along Cracker Sport Road. The boards and commissions we're responsible for, so planning commission, the meeting tomorrow, we have Long's Water, Kratsor Elementary School, and Ridge Farm Phase 1A. So that's for the final plan approval. Zoning Hearing Board, which is scheduled for the 22nd, which I believe is Monday. The proposed commercial development on 309, the Wawa, was originally scheduled for the 27th. They continued it, which means they pulled it off the agenda, not agenda, off the docket and are carrying it to the November 22nd meeting. You mentioned the Landscape and Shade Tree meeting, the commission. There's a meeting Monday as well, and right now, they're going to be discussing the Ollie Store landscaping for that. There were some shade trees that needed to be put in there. As you mentioned, there's two vacant positions on that board, so hopefully, we can get those filled. With regards to permits, we saw a decrease in roughly 11 permits for the residential side and an increase in the non-residential side. And my plan is to do a quarterly summary so that you guys will see kind of how the permits are fluctuating and reflect seasonality. We also take in the public works permits. So there were 41 total. That was a six permit increase from last meeting. Also enforcement, we've seen similar numbers. High grass and weeds were still a complaint and noise were the top two complaints. And, or investigations. That's it.
Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
Any questions from the board for Dave? Any from the public? Like your chat? Nothing in the chat? All right, great, thanks. Great job. Finance Department, I don't know, how can you top the budget? What possibly could else you could be working on? I don't even know.
Most of my report. In terms of the finance department, we have been working on the budget mostly for the past few months. However, the main thing that, beyond that, the only thing I have to further report is that we're excited to move forward in December with the addition of our Assistant Director of Finance, which will give us heightened operational efficiency, increased morale, and allow us to work with our finance committee, our third-party accounting firm, and our auditor to remediate audit deficiencies and pursue improvements in 2022.
Fantastic. Great news. All right, any questions for Scott? All right. Any in the public? Ran up there real quick. None in the chat? Okay. Park and Rec, Mike?
Evening again. Real quick, just a couple highlights. Number one, we had a very successful walkthrough with residents this past weekend at Cola Ridge Park, and that project, as you all know, has been going on pretty much this entire year, has had a lot of public input, and we are going to be soon wrapping that up. We do have our final public meeting scheduled for Tuesday, November 30th at 6:00 PM. It is a virtual meeting, and the link can be found on the website homepage under the events calendar. Another thing I'll touch on is that we recently received the DEP permits for Jordan Creek Greenway Trail construction through Cover Bridge Park, and that coincided with the opportunity for us to apply for a TASSA grant. This is a non-matching grant, so there's no cost to the township. And if successful, if fully successful, it could fund the entire construction of the trail through the park. Beyond that, as far as the Jordan Creek Greenway goes, we're still working with the school district to secure the final easement needed there to connect us up to Cedar Crest Boulevard, which we hope to have in our hands soon. December 4th, 4:00 to 7:00 PM, I hope to see everybody in Cover Bridge Park. Our annual community tree and bridge lighting and the new addition of the candy cane hunt this year is getting a lot of buzz around the community. Hope everybody can make it out for that event. And planning has also begun for our Spring and Summer 22. Believe it or not, I know it's not Thanksgiving yet, but the newsletter deadline is in about two months, so we've started working towards putting things on paper for next year's plans. And that's everything April through September of next year that goes out in our Spring and Summer newsletter.
Fantastic, Mike. In regards to that grant, which is phenomenal, do, did we reach out to any of our legislators for support? Okay. Including Pat Brown's office?
Yes.
Who supported us on the Greenway? Okay. Excellent, thank you. Excellent.
Just a question, what amount grant did you apply for? Is it a dollar amount that we can ask for?
Yes, it was $989,200.
Thank you.
Excellent, thanks, Mike. Any questions? Me from the public? Me in the chat? All right. Chief Dorni? No, not yet. I'm just almost skipped over Herb. Please, I heard you. If that's okay. Herb, come on. What's exciting in Public Works, water and sewer?
Water and sewer, we'll start there. We're going through our emergency action plan to get that all updated by the end of the year with DEP. We have to do that every five years. We're working out test sites for the 2022 lead and copper. We're sending letters out, making sure the residents would still like to take the sample at their address. If not, we do have to supplement it with a different address. But we're working on that. We have our routine water station maintenance that we normally do, the testing, the chlorine addition and all that, making sure that's all working right. And in the sewer, right now, we have the back there out, they're jetting all the problem areas that we know that are prone to backups. So we are cleaning all those areas right now. And just as an update on USG, they will probably be wrapped up by the end of next week with all the cast-in-place repairs that we had for this year. Then we'll go down to the garage. We have our routine maintenance for the whole fleet. We're also servicing all the winter operation equipment, making sure the snow blowers work and making sure all the plows are ready to go. We did set up five trucks, so just in case we, while we are set up for leaves, we do have the ability to set five trucks up also. We have those set in case a snow squall would come through one night, we could get out right away. On the street side, it's a lot of leaf collecting. So we are out there, we're actually going to be working this Saturday to help the residents have parking throughout the whole township for the holiday coming up next week. We are going to work Saturday. We should be able to have everything cleaned up by Wednesday, so residents will have parking in front of their houses where the leaves currently are. We're inspecting the inlets for the upcoming paving seizing in 2022. I have one gentleman going around. That's how we base our inlet repairs for the catch basins to what has to be fixed. We usually average in a year 40 to 50 repairs. So, but what we do is we go through the paving areas first before we put a new surface down, let's fix what's broken underneath it. In the park side, it's more leaf cleanup. We're in the parks, mulching the leaves. And the other thing we're working on at the same time is we're putting the final touches on the tree and bridge lighting. All the lights are up. We're almost ready. Tomorrow, the electric, temporary electric that goes in the park is going to be installed, and then we're going to put the extension cords out, fire it up and
Plug it in.
Keep our fingers crossed. We don't have a power draw nowhere, because we did add more lights this year, so.
Fantastic.
I think it'll all work for us.
Thank you, Herb.
No problem.
Any questions for Herb? Any from the public? Nothing in the chat? All right. Chief Dorni, can you top all of that?
I was going to start off in respect for Scott Barrett. Imagine a day in the future, but I'll leave that go. Can't top his budget presentation. To go over some stats, we're looking at for the month of October, we had 1,079 reports, which is an increase of 166 for an 18% increase compared to 2020. UCRs, which is our crimes, we had 64 for the month in comparison to 66 last year in 2020. Arrests, we had 29 in comparison to 2020 with 27, which is a 7% increase. Year-to-date, if we, we kind of did our stats a little bit differently this year because although it'd be great to be able to say that, you know, our crime compared to last year is pretty much the same during the year of a pandemic, it's not a fair comparison. So what we did was we went and compared 2021 to 2019, pre-pandemic. And if you look at the reports for monthly, we're down 105 for 9% decrease. UCRs were down 20 compared to 2019 for a 24% decrease, and arrests were down 12 for a 29% decrease compared to 2019. Year-to-date, we are up 1,103 reports for a 10% increase, although we are down 374 for a decrease of 35% in reported crimes, as well as down 187 arrests, which is also 35% decrease compared to 2019. So I think that's a better estimate to show what we're doing is working. The crime is down compared to 2019, pre-pandemic. So it's, like I said, it's not fair to compare data to a year that was essentially everybody was homebound during the pandemic and the crime and calls for service really dropped during that pandemic. One thing I do want to throw out there is the Lehigh County Chiefs of Police, the consortium test is coming up again, December 18th. So anybody interested in becoming a police officer in Lehigh County, we are offering the test at lehighcountypolice test.com. The application deadline closes at noon on December 10th, so we encourage people to get out there. We know it's a very challenging time to be a police officer. Our applicants have diminished considerably over the last several years for various reasons, but we are working through and pretty much exhausting our civil service lists across the county and in need of applicants. So we are going to be testing again on the 18th. Want to throw out the Citizens Police Academy graduation for the Board of Commissioners. I sent an email to all the commissioners and also the commissioners-elect to make sure they got it for December 9th at 6:00 PM. In this room, we'll be having a graduation ceremony to congratulate all of our soon-to-be graduates of the first-ever Citizens Police Academy that we held. I think it's been a very big success, but I'd like to have the commissioners and the commissioners-elect see what we do in that program and have an opportunity to speak to some of our attendees to show what we do and hopefully get some tips for moving forward. So I want to cordially invite everybody to that event. And the officers are out there doing a great job and continuing to work hard. Officer Storost is in the back, I want to recognize him, so everybody gets to see that. Officer Storostas in the back, I want to recognize him, so everybody gets to see that, that face. And we are, as you can tell, we are deep into the No Shave November/December, which we have raised a substantial amount of money. We'll be making announcements in the near future as to where those donations are going to go into our local community. One definitely being Parkland Cares, our food bank through the school district, to, to help feed some of our, our folks in the, our community. It's a, a great program. We've partnered with them on many, many events, and that is going to be one of the steadfast donations that we make every year. So we think that's very valuable to our community. So those announcements, announcements will be coming out soon.
Thank you, Chief Dorni.
You are welcome.
Any questions from the board? Any from the public? Me in the chat? All right. Tony, what do you have for us tonight from the engineering standpoint?
It's not fair to always follow Chief Dorni with exploring engineering here. So, as was mentioned before, three, three plans on the PC tomorrow. Additionally, now that paving season over, you should probably see the roads are opening up and everything's being winterized. Construction should be down. So this time of year is usually when we work with staff and public works to update things like standard construction details and items that we always see that need some tweaking based upon the last previous years, either construction process or, you know, Saldo ordinance references. So that's where we're at in these winter months.
That was exciting, Tony. Excellent. Excellent job. Any questions for Tony? Any from the public? Me in the chat? All right.
Thanks.
You got it. All right. Next this evening on our agenda, we have a variety of sets of minutes for consideration and possible action. The first set of minutes is our October 18th, 2021. These were the special BOC meeting minutes for the amount set for the bond issuance. Are there any questions or comments on the October 18th meeting minutes? Beautifully done. There are no questions. I make a motion for approval.
Second?
We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Morgan, second from Commissioner Kelly. Roll call, please, Randy.
Commissioner Walk?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Sutton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes. Motion carries. All right. Next this evening, we have our October 20th, 2021 BOC meeting minutes. These were previously tabled to add in an explanation for a nay vote. Other than that, there were no other changes. Any other questions or comments?
I have one comment that I mailed in today for the Community Garden Center, somewhere on page three. Please add, Commissioner Walk requested and Frank Petroselli agreed to provide a list of single-use plastic bags, pros and cons, that addresses the wholesale economic and environmental science issues. So that's the requested addition. I'll note that Frank Petroselli actually responded to that and sent something to me, at least. I'm not sure if he sent it to the whole board. I don't remember.
He did.
Okay.
All right. Well, I agree. That makes sense. So I would make a motion with the amendment, the small amendment that Commissioner Walk had mentioned, that we approve the meeting minutes with the minor amendment.
I move. Second.
Motion on the floor from Commissioner Morgan, second from Commissioner Kelly. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Walk?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Sutton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes. Motion carries. All right. Next, we have our November 3rd, 2021 Board of Commissioner Meeting Minutes. Comments, thoughts? Again, beautifully done. If there are no comments or thoughts, I'd make a motion for approval for our November 3rd.
Second.
Okay. If I give that to Commissioner Sutton, motion on the floor from Commissioner Morgan, second from Commissioner Sutton. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Walk?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Sutton?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes. Motion carries. And last but not least, we have our November 11th Premier Center Luxury Apartments Conditional Use Hearing. This was the vote taken meeting. Are there any questions or comments on those meeting minutes? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion for approval?
I move.
We have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Walk. Have a roll call vote, please, Randy.
Commissioner Walk?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Sutton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes. Motion carries. All right. Next this evening, it's the opportunity for courtesy of the floor. This is a chance for a discussion on any non-agenda item. Is there anybody who'd like courtesy of the floor this evening? How about in the chat, Dave? All right. I'd like to note that our invoices and purchasing requisitions have been reviewed by our interim township manager and our Director of Finance. We do need a motion this evening to authorize that our checks be issued to pay our bills as tabulated. Do I hear said motion?
I move.
Motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Sutton. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Walk?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Yes.
Commissioner Sutton? Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
And Commissioner Morgan?
Yes. Motion carries. We have no executive session planned for this evening. Can I have a motion for adjournment?
I move.
Motion on the floor from Commissioner Kelly. Can I have a second? Second from Commissioner Sutton. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries. Have a lovely evening, everybody, and a wonderful